Meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to Order. For those of you who have been to these meetings before, we usually work off of paper agendas, and I'm trying something new today. We're trying to work off of a laptop and see if we can save the city some money doing this. So if you see me looking at this, I'm not checking my email or anything else. My mind is totally on the subject. Anyway, the first item on the agenda is approval of the summary minutes of the December 15th, 2009 meeting.
So moved?
Has there been a motion to approve those minutes? And second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Item number two, public hearing on petition number 4321 filed by Roberta Kaufman requesting the closure and vacation of Cypress Street from Willow Drive to Comanche Avenue in the replat of Edgemere addition to the city of Salina, Kansas. Cypress Street is located one block south of West Crawford Street adjacent to Centennial Park. Return by the city commission for additional public input. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The idea on the city's policy on street vacations and the closure of a street that's open to traffic is that the planning commission would conduct a public hearing similar to what you would with a zoning matter, and that you would be the input gathering body, and through the minutes and other correspondence, that record would be put together so that when the city commission considered it, they would have a good indication of what the public input was on the question. On this particular item, there was a public hearing held in November on the 17th, and although we sent the usual property owner notification letters out to an area on Crawford and Willow and Birch and owners of everybody abutting Cypress, we didn't have anybody appear at the meeting. I feel that a number of calls from residents asking for clarification and talking about the concept in general, but nobody submitted anything in writing, nobody stated specific opposition, and so no one appeared at that hearing. And this went forward to the city commission on December the 7th, and a number of initiatives were done kind of door-to-door through the neighborhood, and it was clear that a re-notification and sending out of information was appropriate. And since you are the fact gathering public hearing body, this was sent back to you, and owners were re-notified. And so basically, we're treating this as a start-over public hearing. The other thing that occurred, and this just was based on the Blakes incorrectly writing on their calendar the date of the meeting, they, after the 17th public hearing, they had decided that they wanted to submit a letter of opposition, and so that is in your packet. And so that is a changed circumstance from what we had initially. And so just to get the bearings, this is Hickory Hut here, and the right-of-way that abuts that is right here. And if they basically have veto power over this section here. So what that means essentially is this coming back to you, you've got three alternatives to consider. One is that you leave this section in place, have a dead end or barricade here, close and vacate this, close and vacate this, or that you just focus on this segment right here, leaving this section in place just as it is. Or you recommend that the petition be denied altogether. So if we back this up, the initial request, when I met with the Blakes and Jeff Mays met with the Blakes and Don Mars, their architect, met with the Blakes, they were on the fence when this petition was filed. They didn't have a firm position either way, and subsequently, as you see by the letter, they came around to that position. But the original request was to vacate and close that entire section. And the rationale for that is that the lots there on Crawford, and I don't know, John, it might be a good time to switch over to the photos and just to give people their bearings. So that would be nine through 14. But this, this is, you're on Willow, and you're looking to the east, and these lots right here are south of Cypress, but they are vacant, and they are zone C5. I think there's been some continued misunderstanding that somehow this application or petition somehow is affecting the land use or zoning of those lots. Those lots have been zoned C5 since about 1974, and they just haven't been built upon during that time. And of course, part of the reason for that, on this side of Cypress as well as the other side of Cypress, is that the lots are so shallow that it's difficult to build anything freestanding on them even though they are zone commercial. So Roberta Kaufman owns six commercially zoned lots, and that includes lots on the south side of Cypress. And the idea behind the petition would be to eliminate Cypress as a separation between her holdings and allow for a deepened, more developable commercial lot that would allow for future redevelopment. And so, I don't know. I had the drawing there that had the zoning and had the lines that show what we might get. John, maybe that's number one. Okay. So what the motivation is, is that Roberta Kaufman owns this, she owns this. It's all zone C5, and if this were eliminated, this property would be just as deep as the Quick Shop site, and would be large enough and deep enough that you could do something in the way of redevelopment there. If you look over here, you've got vacant ground, and you've got an old house foundation here and a small building that was previously used by Hickory Hut, and that's probably not ever going to change if the lots stay at 110-foot depth. But the idea is that you would create a site here. You would have Birch extend through here, and you would have a second lot here that would be a twin to Hickory Hut but would be deeper and could be deeper yet if the city relinquished this part of the right-of-way, and then you'd have something that would come down on either side of Birch or that nature. But this line right here, that's the C5 zoning line. And so, one of the comments that we'd heard from some of the neighboring property owners to the south is that somehow the elimination of Cypress was going to push commercial closer to the properties to the south. And John, if you would go to slide eight. This plan was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the reason for that is it took about four or five variances to make it work. But this is Willow over here, this is Cypress, this is Birch, these are the houses on Willow and Birch. These are the vacant lots on the south side of Cypress. Well, if you have commercial lots, most likely, and they've got the zoning in place, you're going to look for some means to use those other than to have them stay vacant. But because they are so shallow and not configured in a very good configuration to be developed standalone, this was the result. But this is the property line with the residential right here, and this, somebody could go out and build this plan today. And so, this plan actually has buildings, development activity much closer to these residential lot lines than the concept plan. I think it's item six, John. If you compare the location of a centered building and parking and a buffer down here with this being the residential fence line and this being where Cypress runs today, redeveloping this on a larger track that allows you to have buffers and keep the building to the north would probably have less impact on the neighboring property owners to the south than the plan that actually somebody could build today, which was for the neighborhood grocery. So, from that standpoint, I just wanted to make clear that none of this application involves changing zoning or changing land use or doing anything with a piece of property that you couldn't already do today. It's repackaging the property to make it deeper and more conducive to having some sort of redevelopment. And so, the items are concerns here is that you didn't get any input at your November 17th public hearing, so this is an opportunity to get that input from neighboring property owners. And we went all the way as far south as we could on Willow and Birch to get that notification out, even though that's well beyond what we would normally do on a zoning case. We don't really have a plan in place for how you would physically remove Cypress Street or make it not be a street anymore, but obviously if this plan came forward, the entire street would be ripped out, and it would be incorporated into this site. And we have summarized in there for you what the C5 zoning requirements would be that would apply to anything that occurred on this property. And so uses could include retail offices, retail stores, restaurants. You would have a minimum setback of 75 feet from the center of Crawford. You have a 10-foot building setback for side and rear yards, but the landscape ordinance requires a 15-foot buffer on the south edge of the property. There would be outdoor storage permitted under C5, but it would have to be screened. But I think the things that we would point out first and foremost is that the permitted uses would not change. Anything allowed in C5 would be permitted just as it is today, and building height, maximum height of 50 feet, which means that theoretically you could take the existing convenience store down and put up a three- or four-story motel if you could shoehorn it in there, but just at 110 feet, that's not going to happen. So I think the primary things that we would point out is that the site would have to be redeveloped. The redevelopment would have to conform with current requirements for front yard landscaping on Crawford, a landscape buffer on the south, some sort of solid screening there. And so, the future land use plan shows West Crawford as a commercial retail corridor and also a gateway into Salina from the interstate. And so Cypress Street is a transition zone, and so that's what makes that a difficult exercise as far as where to draw that line. And so our focus has been primarily on Crawford and the impact on it, and I know that the neighbors obviously would have a different perspective. They're looking at it as far as the impact on the interior residential neighborhood. But this is not finalized, but certainly we would have, if you look at what this frontage is today, it's virtually one continuous open driveway. And so what you're trying to avoid is that today you have a car here at Willow making a right turn, and you have people coming out of the convenience store right here making a left turn or trying to get into Crawford there. This plan would eliminate all those driveway cuts. We could end up with maybe one central cut here or none at all. You would restore this back to green space, and you would get a public sidewalk installed along here as well. Were you able to get the drawing that shows, John, the, I guess it's slide four? And since Dan is working on this project, I'll let Mr. Stack kind of outline for you. This is a gateway feature that the engineering department's been working on as part of our wayfinding and gateway project. And this is realigned to Centennial Road where the signals are and Crawford here and Quick Shop here. But Dan, if you would want to kind of outline what the plan is there?
Well, that's some landscaping, kind of an entry corridor to the city. We'll have a "Welcome to Salina" sign there when those are installed, right there where John is putting the mouse cursor, I guess, right there on the corner with some backdrop of some evergreens and some native grasses, basically. It's just kind of our, part of our wayfinding landscaping improvements to corridors in the city. Is that good enough, Dean?
Yeah. And so what we're trying to point out is that this is, this whole exercise and this whole application is really a balancing of interests where admittedly staff is looking at it from the standpoint that this is a gateway. Crawford is a major entryway into the community. What tools are in the toolbox creatively to make this a site for redevelopment or a more attractive gateway in from the west? And just wanted to point out what the city was doing. And we will, for the public input and discussion, what we'll want to hear about is what impacts closing Cypress would have on as far as circulation. Two things that have been pointed out to date is that one individual pointed out that when there's a lot of congestion right here and they can't get on Crawford, then Cypress allows them to come down here and do that. And admittedly, if Cypress is not there, you're not going to have that option if you're on Willow. The other question that has come up is how do people on Willow get over to the park? And I don't know if we have the plat on there, John. But this is Centennial Park, Willow, Birch. Plum is the next cross street, which is pretty far to the south, but there are also these mid-block pedestrian easements that were designed into the plat, and the purpose of this was to provide a, an easement for a walkway. These blocks are so long, was to provide a place for people here to get through, to get over to the park site, or to get to Sunset School, or to get to other parts of the neighborhood. So we have this here. We could do something similar to that on the redevelopment site. I keep having you jump around, John, but if you would go to the number six slide and pan it down. It would be possible as far as any site plan. I think what's likely to happen is what happens already today with people walking across the Hickory Hut parking lot to get from Crawford to the park, is that you'd have people cutting across this parking lot to get over to the park. But it would be possible also to retain or require a pedestrian easement through here, through this buffer strip that would allow for a pathway or something to be built that would provide access from Willow over to the park for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. But you have Plum to the south, and you also have the mid-block pedestrian easement. So, the, I think the things that we would point out, which I don't think are relevant to the neighbors, is when we looked at it, there was no business or property who was solely dependent on Cypress for their access. It's primarily used almost as a frontage road, and it is primarily used for overflow parking because the lots to the north are so small. And so, we looked at it from that perspective. But as I pointed out, having the objection from Hickory Hut eliminates that section of Cypress from consideration. So your options would be to recommend approval of the closure and vacation of Cypress from the west edge of Hickory Hut over to Birch and then on over to Willow, or you could recommend approval of the closure and vacation of just that section between Willow and Birch. And if that is done, then it may be less important to construct Birch as an extension through. Or your third option, of course, is to recommend that the petition be denied altogether and that Cypress and Birch remain as is. And so the statutes say that in order to close or vacate a street, you must find that no private rights will be injured or endangered by the proposed street closure, and that the general public would suffer no loss or inconvenience if the street is closed or vacated. So from a statutory standpoint, those are the things that you should focus on. And then our recommendations, if the petition were recommended for approval, would be that you would have a, essentially, a recommendation from you. You would have a first reading from the city commission, which would indicate that they were supportive. Then the burden would be on the private owners to come forward with redevelopment plans, and then once those were approved and the plan was finalized, then you would move forward with second reading of the vacation. And so nothing would happen until there was actual plans for redevelopment. The cost of extending Birch would be borne by the development, and they would also be responsible for moving any pavement in Cypress Street. And as part of that, they would be dedicating back restricted access along Crawford to control driveways there, and that we would encourage the access to those sites be from Birch Drive. And then, I think, John, on number five, if you could put that up. This is a very important part of this equation from the city and utility providers' perspective is that Cypress is a pretty busy corridor for utilities. So you've got storm sewers and water lines and a sanitary sewer that serves Quick Shop. So you would eliminate the street, but you would keep the easement and the utilities in place, and they would just have to keep any physical footprint of a building north of that. But the plan that was shown to you as a conceptual redevelopment does accomplish that. So I think it's just important to look at this as a balancing of, I think the staff and the petitioner are looking at it as a Crawford issue, and I think the neighbors in the neighborhood are looking at it from the neighborhood's circulation standpoint, and you will just need to balance those two concerns. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have or engineering-specific questions. Mr. Stack's available.
Any questions of staff at this point?
On the aerial view, could you move it over so we could see the area that you were talking about for the entryway development there?
Yes. You could pan that over just to the west a little, John. We've had, I mean, one thing that this, we've, to note is that we've had, and my personal experience, I think I'm up to maybe nine or 10 meetings with Quick Shop, and what they would like to do is demolish this, slide it back, but they would like, and this is not all needed as right-of-way, but they'd like to acquire part of this, but this was done as a KDOT right-of-way acquisition, and KDOT didn't get clear title to it, so they really have to work on it through KDOT and not the city of Salina. But this is the area here that would be the gateway right in here, and if there was a plan at all for expanding Quick Shop out into this area, they would have to incorporate that gateway into whatever site improvements that they had. But again, the ownership of Quick Shop and the zoning goes to this line, and the zoning comes across like this and has since the 1970s.
Also, from that view, would you show us how close, if this were approved, to those houses on the south, the development would be?
Okay. If you, if you superimpose, if you took that site plan that had a restaurant building on it, the south end of the restaurant building would be about right here. And so this would all be circulation and parking. But this, right here, regardless of what happens, except I think the Board of Zoning Appeals reduced this buffer to 10 feet for the neighborhood grocery store, no matter what happens, there would have to be a 15-foot buffer in here that had no driveways, no parking or anything in it. But because of the utilities in here, you couldn't build a building in this area, so you'd have to keep the building more to the north here and use this for parking and circulation.
And the buffer, the landscaped buffer would go about where?
Go right in here.
Okay. And that would have to be a screen, a continuous?
Well, there's already a fence here, so you wouldn't do a duplicate fence. There's no fence here, but you would have some sort of solid screening along here, and then in this 15-foot strip here, it could be evergreens or deciduous trees or something that would serve as a buffer for light, sound, distance between the commercial activity and the residences to the south. But that would be the case whether the street was there or not.
And a pedestrian easement that you were suggesting could be possible would go on what side then?
Right through here.
So it'd be?
You would take this buffer and you would incorporate a sidewalk or trail or something into that buffer so that you would have a means for bicycles or pedestrians to get from here over to there.
That was my question. What would the, what would that easement look like? In other words, so it'd be a paved, I mean, a concrete sidewalk?
Could be just like something you have out at Jerry Ivy Park, which is, you know, like limestone screenings or something like that. It could be an actual sidewalk. It could be a number of things, but the important thing would be to get it identified as a access easement or pedestrian easement, and then the city could decide what that needed to be. But you would make sure that the private owner set that aside for that use.
That would be a 15-foot landscape pedestrian easement, basically?
Right. And then you could, within that 15-foot strip, you would have either a four- or five-foot path in there. If you've seen what's out at Jerry Ivy Park, that's not paved, but it's the limestone screenings like you have on top of the levee, and that really holds up pretty well for bicycles or pedestrians.
Now, is the existing pavement through the center of the block, is that similar sort of thing, and is it used down farther south?
Down to the south.
Uh-huh.
A lot of those, the easements there, but there's nothing there. There's a right to put something there, but in a lot of cases, there's nothing there.
It's not blocked, though. I mean, do the residents use it?
Some cases it's blocked, some cases it's blocked with fences, but the easement still remained. It's just that they, technically, this easement- It's just that they, technically, this easement's still there. It's 10 feet wide. You could go in and put a sidewalk or path in there. There could be, somebody could have a shed in there, there could be fences or whatever. They probably shouldn't be there, but they're, um, they are easements nonetheless. So, this, the, the city or, would have a right to put a sidewalk or something through that, 'cause the, the reason for that was it was so far between blocks there was to cut the block in half by having the ability to have people get through the middle of the block. And there's a number of those in this subdivision. Some of them have been eliminated, um, and some of them were never built. In, in other words, sidewalks were never put in, but the easements was, was provided.
On the, the drawing that, that shows the, um, utilities, uh, where the, where Birch Street would go through, there's a square-looking speckled thing. Yeah, that right, what is that? And then the spout that goes off to the left and the one that goes?
That's an old foundation, I think.
Okay.
Is that 14, John, in your photographs?
House Foundation.
I've been out there with Ms. Kaufman and it's, it's a house foundation and it's got sewer and water spigots still there. I think this is an electrical box here. It was, um, taken out by a tornado and then demolished and everything was left behind and the sewer water connections, electrical has all been sitting there for all that period of time. But this, this is what you see in that picture.
Thank you.
Dean, has there been any investigation done on what would happen with traffic flow in regard to Crawford if Birch were extended to Crawford? You don't have a street across the Crawford, on the north side of Crawford line, but you have some driveways. It won't create, 'cause I can see a lot of people who live on Birch, that their house faces Birch, would use that going north if that were extended maybe to gain access to Crawford Street.
Yeah, I think the idea was that, was twofold. One, the access and visibility to the Centennial Park is not good from Crawford, so having Birch go through would improve that so that you could actually, um, if you're staying at one of these motels, actually see and get to the park. But, yeah, you have these driveways here that, that don't match up perfectly, but I guess the idea is that you, this is one big gigantic curb cut with vehicles going every which way and that would all come out and so the, you would have more separation between driveways and vehicles coming onto Crawford at, at more of an interval. I guess, we were looking at this similar to what was done at, at Mound View, east of McDonald's, connecting to Crawford. And because of Faith Drive and because of the inability to make left turns out or left turns in at Faith Drive there, Mound View was, was put in to provide improved access into that neighborhood. So, this, this would provide better access into the park from Crawford and also if you put sidewalks in here on both sides of Birch, then you're going to improve pedestrian access from Crawford as well. But I guess I'd let Dan speak to that, but we were looking at it, is that getting rid of all these turning points here and concentrating them here would be a traffic improvement compared to what situation you have now.
To my way of thinking, that would take pressure off of Willow as well?
That's correct.
Wes?
You could split up, if Willow backs up, I mean, arguably, it could back up based on people from, what is that street? Birch going over to get out on Willow. So, this, that way it would split up the traffic a little bit more and then do exactly what Dean said, which is get rid of the conflict points that are all through that entire area along, is it Rod's Four, basically, that entrance there? It would feel like it would be an improvement.
And we could, um, we could stipulate that there not be any access off of Crawford, that access come only off of Willow and Birch, is that correct?
You could stipulate it or you could, you know, wait and that could be final, determined finally by the city commission at a time that a site plan is, is finalized. But certainly having no access to Crawford or trading all of this for one well-placed driveway in the center between Birch and Willow would be improvements. But I guess, um, we would be looking at as trading, there's no access control there through the plating and so this would actually improve the city's position vis-à-vis driveway access. There would be more control than there is today. And would probably eliminate some of those existing, all of this opening would be eliminated and either traded out or completely restricted as shown. But you, it's within your discretion to say all access should be from Birch and none from Crawford.
Any further questions of staff? All right, this is a public hearing to gain information on this item. Please come forward if you care to comment and state your name and address and keep your comments to about five minutes if you would please.
I'm Alvin Casper. I live at 727 Willow Drive and, uh, I don't know, that first notice that you guys were talking about that was sent out, uh, early on in, in November, I got my notice there for the meeting on the 17th and that was the first notice that I got. So, I didn't know about the zoning meeting, the prior one, so, uh, when I got this, I, I went down, after I figured out what was going on, I went down part of Willow Drive and most of Birch and I've got 22 names of the residents that do not want Cypress closed and they do not want Birch open to Crawford. Cited mainly for safety, speed of traffic on Birch right now, because a lot of the people on Willow Drive was complaining about the speed of the traffic and with concern of the park, the water park, the basketball court. They didn't want, uh, direct access off Crawford for the traffic to gain speed for the park on down the road. What I'd like to suggest is just have them, uh, replat the two vacant lots, the residential, let someone build a couple houses there and let the Cypress Street be the natural barrier between commercial and residential. And so, and one of the other things that, uh, living the second house south of the vacant lot, um, I get a lot of trash from the fast food businesses and, uh, I've, can't say that I've ever got a piece of trash from Rod's. He's never had his logo, decal, whatever, you know? So, personally, I just soon see Rod stay where he's at as far as the concerns of the access off Crawford. Uh, I've lived there 22 years and I can't really say that I ever remember an accident coming off of Crawford going into Rod's. So, I don't really see where that's really an issue, to be honest about it. Uh, and I didn't realize that there was a walkway farther down Willow Drive to go across to Birch. Um, like Dean was saying there, there's probably buildings or whatever on that property already, which the city has the ownership of to be able to go in and, and notify those people that they have to clear that area. So, you know, you're not going to have very happy residents there, but, you know, if it was pointed out when they bought the property, why, you know, they should be knowledgeable of it being there. But personally, I didn't know about it, but, uh, I just, I don't know, I personally would like to see it where it is. I think, uh, if they're concerned about the gateway to Salina, you know, if they want to give Rod a, a good tax break or whatever, some kind of incentive, I'm sure he'd reface his store and liquor store, you know, and come up with some glitzy new, you know, exterior, you know? But, uh, I guess I noticed that they were planting the trees and stuff over there on Centennial and I guess it kind of concerned me that when all this stuff matures, if that's going to actually create a blind spot for people coming off of Centennial and looking east on Crawford, I know you got the stoplight there, but, and you're not supposed to go before your light turns green and all that, but I like to be watching when I'm coming up to an intersection to see what's coming, what's available and whatnot. But, um, I'm just concerned about maybe sometime five, 10 years from now when it matures, they'll be going in there, cutting it down, removing it. So, you know, it's, but the other thing also on Cypress Drive, um, I didn't realize how much I use that street and I do use it a lot, just for the fact that when, with the stoplight being there on Centennial and Crawford, when the traffic starts backing up there, why, um, or turning right, I should say, when the traffic off of Centennial turns right on Crawford, why then it's hard to get on Crawford from Willow Drive. So, I do turn right on Cypress, go down the street and then enter Crawford a little further down where it's, uh, thinned out a little bit, you know, and this makes it a whole lot easier. So, personally, I would really like to not see this proposal go through. So, but, thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
If you have a copy of that petition, we would like to keep that with the record and we'd furnish that to the city commission.
Okay. Do you want it or you want to give it to them? Yeah, I tried to make copies of it, but they didn't turn out real well. So, maybe you guys got a better copy than she.
Hi, my name is Susan Herman. I live at 741 Willow Drive, just five doors down from Cypress. Originally, I did not get a letter, but I did get a letter here a few weeks ago, um, telling us about this meeting. I've lived, uh, on Willow 25 years. I walk on Cypress almost every day, not recently, but, um, when the weather's nice. Do use that as a route and it's, that street's used a lot for walkers in their walking routine over in our neighborhood. The, um, the concern I have is mainly a safety issue with our young children. I don't have any kids. Our neighborhood is finally coming back where there's younger families with small children. Going over to the park is a big concern from Willow Drive over to, um, Centennial. Uh, I've heard some things today that didn't hear at the city commission meeting that I was glad to hear, uh, things that we could do should this go through. I certainly would not like to see it go through. I feel like it's carving up our neighborhood and I, I don't like that. Uh, I don't think anybody in this room would like to have their neighborhood cut off or carved up. Uh, the traffic issue, I'm not convinced that the Birch deal is a good idea. If that's the only access they have to get in to that proposed building or whatever, I think that could be a real problem. Cypress is used a lot for people to finagle through the traffic. Sometimes it gets jammed up, people coming out of Quick Shop, turning on Willow to get out on Crawford from the gas pumps and stuff and, uh, where I see where we almost have wrecks and collisions or somebody getting bumped into is right there at that corner, people trying to come out of that driveway onto Willow. Willow and Crawford. When they come out on the east side of Quick Shop, they'll get piled up coming out of the parking lot of Quick Shop, people coming around the corner and then they're, it's, it's not good. Um, I would really like to see, um, I'm all for progress. I am. I'm not trying to be a, an old brat, stand here saying I want my way. I like to have my way a lot, but I, I truly believe a safety issue. I did not know about the mid-block easement thing. Obviously, there's something built there. Also, I do want to pull it out, the fence, and I didn't quite understand, uh, the comment on the fence on the south side of Cypress, that's a homeowner's fence. Were you talking about a different fence?
Well, as a matter of policy, when there's a requirement that a screening fence be erected between any commercial business and any adjoining residential, so like at Green Lantern at Iron in Ohio, they've got fence surrounding most of their property there 'cause they have houses opposite that. But if you have a situation where a homeowner has already put up a privacy fence?
Right.
Then we don't require the business to put up a second one right next to it. They would only have to if the, the existing fence were taken down. But I think we had from the, and I could be wrong from the photo, but that there was a fence here, but there isn't one.
No, that's right. There isn't one over on these.
There would be a requirement that a fence be installed here, but this existing fence would serve as a screen as long as it was maintained. You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't require a duplicate fence where you already had one.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. And then lastly, I, I just think, you know, it's been, um, zoned commercial on that south side of Cypress for all these years and vacant and I don't quite understand, other than you could make more money, I suppose, selling it later on, but, uh, and then to go where we're going to chop up the block, I just totally disagree with that. And I want to thank all of you for listening to me.
Thank you for comments.
I'm Lawrence Rogers from 750 Birch and, uh, we just moved to Salina recently, three years ago. We looked around town, there's lots of nice houses about southeast part of town, but, uh, we come across Birch over there and it's a nice quiet home. I don't suppose any of you live on Crawford or on Ohio or on Iron, those through streets? And that's the reason we picked a small neighborhood where it's quiet. We didn't want to live on, we saw houses on Ohio that we could have had, you know? We found a nice quiet neighborhood over there, no through traffic, a quiet park over there that is used. The Hispanic kids used that thing from April till November. And it's a good place for our Hispanic kids who can't afford to go to our two million-dollar swimming pool to go enjoy an afternoon with their parents. And that is one of the best investments this city has ever made, is that San Diego Park. Now, to put a, a fast road right past that with those little kids running out there, even those big kids, those big high school kids playing basketball, that ball goes out there in the street every 15 minutes. I just like my nice quiet neighborhood and that's the reason we came to Salina, because we found a neighborhood we enjoy. The traffic flow off of, uh, well onto right, we use Cypress to get out of, of, off of Crawford. We go to over east, make our left-hand turn or right-hand turn because the, the traffic has thinned down, got into a flowway for our eye. Sure, it backs up right there off of, uh, the filling station, but it's not serious. I mean, how many times has anybody ever sat there any more than three or four cars? But the main cause, cause of that is a stoplight. The stoplight holds traffic, you get a chance to get out. Then you, if traffic comes through there with, going east and west, you can't get out to whether you want to go left or right. So, the, the traffic flow is a problem right there, but it would not help it to anybody opening Birch up and making another three-way up that direction call. Another thing I'm concerned about is you're all looking at, at the income, the taxes that you're beginning off this new facility. Will you be getting that much more income for the city as far as property taxes, as far as sales taxes are concerned than what we already get from the existing facilities we have? I can't see that putting up another, obviously, is going to bring in that much more revenue for the city to justify having another building in there. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for comments, anyone else?
I wish the pool was two million, it's 12 million, it's 12 million, it's not, I said, I wish it was only two million, it's 12 million.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't, living in a higher neighborhood, I guess, Centennial Park is one of the best things we've ever invested in.
Good, I'm glad to see it gets utilized over there, I just want to shock you a little more than two million, yeah.
I'm Fay Rogers at 750 Birch Drive, and of course, that was my husband that spoke, and I guess my main concern is the safety for the children playing at the park. This, it is used, we, the water park's right across from our house, and we watch the young children, and on further up is the volleyball, sand volleyball, and the basketball, and of course, the skateboard park, and it has lots of children and lots of activity, and of course, we like the quietness too of not having a through street, because it does make the traffic be less, but I guess my main concern is for the children that are there in the park, and if that were a through street, the, the traffic would be faster, and I think our children need to be safe.
Thank you.
I'm Evelyn Brooks, I live at 802 Willow, I've been there 52 years, and that's always been Cypress to me, and my grandkids grew up there at the park, my granddaughter walks up there, and I feel like she's safe, but if you get a lot of cars over there, they're not going to watch. And when that corner's blocked at Willow, we turn down Cypress to get out, because cars are going that way, and we want to go this way, so we go this way to get out, and we get out a lot faster. I hate to see it blocked, I really do.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on this item?
Rod Bradshaw, 17 Crestview. Originally, I wasn't going to speak at this, I'm the Lee C. of the Rod, there's also a liquor store there, for some reason, it's not listed or given any credit, we run two businesses at that location. Again, I haven't, have anything written out, I'm unprepared, I apologize, and I do appreciate your time, I'm impressed by some of your questions, and some of my concerns I have, Dean, have been answered about Crawford Street. Anyway, I'll go through and try to get through this. We've been here 20 years, it's successful, it works, building's brick, has brown fascia, never realized it was a problem for, looks good, we'd like to be there another 30 years. People are worried about jobs, you know, we do, we have two businesses there, and then we have a third local office there that supports our bookkeeper. They're putting Arby's there, Arby's will close theirs down, move over there, I don't know how that's not a loss of jobs, I mean, it's clearly a loss of jobs, I can't see anybody thinking. Sales tax revenue, you know, I don't have their books, but they're not doing the sales tax, we are. Property tax, I hear they're going to put a pretty nice building up there. We would like to expand and put a car wash up, that's been on the, with Roberta, that, first of all, let me tell you, I wasn't planning on coming, you didn't see me at the first one, you didn't see me at the city, Roberta asked me to come, kind of a weird deal, I'm the one getting chased out, she asked me to come, she didn't ask me to speak, she just asked me to come. Okay, that's it, that's enough on the business. Property, like I said, I think, you know, you're going to lower all the property taxes on all these people that live down that street, let's get away from the business, though. If it does go through, I will ask you to not take Birch all the way to the street. I'm just, we've been on this location 20 years, nobody here's been there, we've been there every day, it's dangerous. You stick that thing, you built a, I coached a seventh grade little girls' basketball team, smart girls, straight A kids, they get playing, they do stupid shit. You get them on that basketball court, that skateboard park, the volleyball, I mean, all that, and then the water park, they're going to make a mistake getting that street people, that's going to happen. I mean, for any one reason at all to reject this, that's the reason, you know, block it off there if you have to, you know, so be it, but don't let that go all the way to Crawford, because it's dangerous, and I think that's what you're hearing from them. And there has been, you know, issues with kids on skateboard crossing Crawford, you know, I do like what Dean suggested on there, I do think that, you know, and we've looked at the other lot, we've talked to Roberta about the other lot, it hasn't seemed to work out yet, because I need more space. I will say a couple of things that Dean says, you know, this 110 feet depth, you know, you got five businesses on there that have been there forever, they're making it work, you know, Arby's wants to come in and be part of the community, you know, part of this neighborhood, they don't need to shove their stuff back into the neighborhood and into the park, I mean, there's, they don't need to go there. There's, you knock out mine, they got six total lots that they can put a piece of property on, and you'll find out that the width, the width of their building now, they have room to do that. They may not be able to have parking on each side, but they can have parking in front of their store and in the back, they can just stay on the front of that Crawford, not impose on the neighborhood. I'm no expert, but I do really appreciate some of your questions, some of my concerns you guys asked. I was afraid it was going to be rubber stamped, and, you know, I was talking to somebody, you know, and then they said it was a done deal, and, you know, I appreciate what you've done. That's, oh, the only other thing I'd say about Hickory Hut, he started in that little shack back when, he was there before I was there, 20 some years ago, 25 years, whatever he was there, and he built himself up to that. He's taking a beating now, I noticed from some people, because he has blocked this, and so some city people aren't thrilled, and he's wanting to pay taxes, and the guy's worked his ass off. He's a local owner, he's done his job, he doesn't need to be ridiculed. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item?
I'm Jeff Mason with Compro Realty at 157 South 7th, I'm here on behalf of the Kaufman family. Spoke to you all earlier about this application, those of you that were here at that time, I'd like to commend Dean and his staff, they did a really good job with the presentation, very thorough, and I too learned some things today that I was unaware of, because, so they did a really good job of presenting it all. A few things that I might mention, staff comments and concerns, vacation behind Hickory Hut, we have, I mean, we don't have a dog in that fight, and that's perfectly okay. Part of the reason that the request was made to cover it all was simply to take care of, we thought it would flow better from a traffic standpoint to just run Comanche to the east. As we'd indicated before, we have a contract in place for the property between Birch and Willow, we do have some interest in the redevelopment of that old slab and the house and so on and so forth, I'm not here to compel you that I've got that done, but it will allow us to continue the redevelopment of that corridor, which to me, you know, this all started prior to the restaurant concept being available and being interested, this was a, how do we go in there and redevelop that area to enhance not only Roberta's investment, but also the gateway into Slina, you know, and it seems to be very much in the face of the comprehensive plan, what are we doing with Crawford, what are we doing with Broadway, things that, you know, the entrances into the city. As far as the staff's comments about the extension of Birch Street and not making it look private, we have, all of that, that pavement will be removed, once we get in there and get developing, Birch Street will go through, that'll be curb and guttered, so, you know, it won't, it won't appear as a public, or it won't remain to be a public access through there, was one of their questions. Another item was, we're in full agreement and understanding of the easement issue that we'll have to dedicate easements back and make those available, you know, for the utilities and whatnot. Some of the items that came of the comments, very empathetic, most, mostly to Rod and his business entities that he's run. One thing that's germane to all that, though, is Rod's leasehold interest expired December 31 of this last year of '09, so this isn't Ms. Kaufman going in and breaking a lease or doing anything of that nature, but rather, this lease expired, she had the opportunity to execute this agreement with this restaurant concept, eliminates a lot of her liability, and quite frankly, is a better financial move for her and her family in the future. The idea of rezoning and going back to residential lots and all of that is doing nothing but depreciating her asset, I mean, it just doesn't make a lot of sense for her. I completely hear and understand the idea of the park, and if we're going to make that an extension through, but one thing that I think that's important to note in this is that Birch is a street that dead-ends to a T to the south, I don't know if you can show that in the aerial, but it goes two blocks past the church and then tees, so really, the traffic that is on that street is either parks generated or the, or the folks that live on Birch, I mean, we're not talking about, it doesn't become a thoroughfare, it's really a street that goes to a, to another T, so, I don't know if you can keep panning to get that. So we've got two, three blocks there of, and then it does ultimately tee.
Runs into Hemlock at the south.
It tees at Hemlock, okay. Okay, so it's not, I mean, we're not opening it up, access to an artery that's then going to run, you know, be a thoroughfare. And the location, I think, Ms. Soderberg, you indicated the idea of where the, where the restaurant would actually be located in relationship to the neighborhoods, you know, Dean pointed out that there's a plan out there that exists today that we could really go build C5 right up against those properties, and you can see from that site plan that that will not in fact be the case, there'll be a great deal of buffer through there, just by virtue of space before we would, versus what could, what could accomplish there. So, I would be happy to answer any questions or concerns, comments that y'all may have on behalf of Roberta as the applicant.
Do you think your client would be on board with the concept of making a pathway easement on the, on the south side of that property for the?
I think, given the, I mean, item one, Roberta's been, she's been a member of the community for a very long time, no longer lives here, but moreover, the restaurant is also wanting to be a, you know, a good neighbor as well, and I think, given the, given the concerns, yes, I think we could, we could work out a dedication of an easement through that, through that buffer strip somehow to allow access through there. I think practically speaking, as Dean had indicated, I think people will still be able to go through the parking lot, but if it makes it work better and makes more sense, we would be, we would be okay with dedicating a four or five foot easement through there to allow access, a pedestrian easement.
Could you talk a little bit about your options, I'm speaking of the lot to the east of, if Birch goes through, how important that is, or what does that mean to development if that's vacated, if we go ahead and vacate that to the Hickory Hut line there?
Yeah, frankly, I don't want to be in, I don't want to be the one to overpromise none or deliver, and we always steer clear of that in my business by virtue of what we do. We have got interest from another national group that we've shown the site to, that we had discussed this pending action that we were going to go. Frankly, it took us a very long time to get contracts executed and get to this place to where we could come to in front of you all. I had tabled that with them, telling them, once I get the street vacated and I can come back and tell you exactly what we have, let's pick it up at that time. That being said, that was prior to some of the economic conditions that have occurred, and a lot of the nationals have retracted, but we've let it set, because I had been frankly to them saying it should be another month, 45 days, and that turned into 90, and I just, I talked with them, I said, as soon as I get it done, we'll talk to you. Last I knew, they still have interest in, in the market, in coming, et cetera, but that, that too would take that old house off there and that foundation and redevelop the area.
But even if it's that, not that particular company, I'm just trying to get a sense of how that allows you to bring something else in, you feel it's necessary to really bring in something else that?
It is in the fact that the 110-foot depth, under the new building codes, setbacks, buffer strips, landscaping and all of that, I mean, if we were to draw a plan, we could build a thousand square foot there, and then it just isn't economic and feasible, so it makes sense to go ahead and get it now. There was frankly, in lieu of not holding this process up with the restaurant, we contemplated the idea of, of letting that go, but, and then having to go through this again, but we decided that it makes, and I hate to, that, that just puts me off with these guys, and I'm back with them saying, okay, well, let's execute a contract contingent of me going through, going through this process to get, get that done. To answer your question, and I'm sorry if I'm running around the tree, but the depth is just, is critical to that area in order to redevelop it. I agree with staff's, staff's sentiment that if, given this, given, if you don't vacate Cypress, odds are you're going to continue to have what you have there, and, and we just, like I said, this started conceptually with the Kaufmans well before we had the restaurant group interested in saying, how do we best utilize this property? The C5 behind is really pretty much dead by virtue of size, you know, Dean illustrated what they went through to try and shoehorn a restaurant, or I mean, a grocery store in there.
Clarify for me just a little bit more, though, if you would, if you didn't, if you didn't open Birch up to Crawford and left that as it is, and then allowed Cypress and, let's see, let me get on a map, so Cypress and Birch to have an intersection there, would that, what would that do for development? It would still allow the Arby's, I guess, is what it's going to be on the one property, and I agree with the sidewalk, of course, on the south to allow walkers to get over the park, but that would also allow the people that currently live on Birch to have access to Cypress like they do now.
Right, I, I was looking at that as that, as that came up as an option, a good example of the restaurant concept now, they couldn't go in there, although they may get the square footage, they orienting your, orienting your building to where you're not actually facing the street and all that is a deterrent, getting the depth where you can orient it properly and get your profit, your, your traffic flows. Frankly, the Birch extension came from an early, early conversation with Dean about, how would you feel about this, does this seem to make sense to you, and he was supportive, he said, yeah, if you, and he thought it made sense for the city to capture the opportunity by way of this redevelopment to extend Birch for better access to the park, visibility to the park, et cetera. So, it was kind of an evolution, I, I can't tell you without a specific client how well that works, it does diminish the marketability of it, that's not to say that we could never ever develop it, but, you know, the 110-foot depth, really, again, with just, with setbacks, you just don't end up with a lot of room there.
But my, my point was to still vacate Cypress in the area where Arby's would be.
Yes, sir.
And then, and, but not extend Birch to Crawford.
Does that limit your ability?
That limit.
To, to, it does, of course, we could still do the restaurant, but it would handicap the ability to market the property to the east by virtue of setbacks, because you just don't end up with any depth in the building. We've got a, Dean, is it a 75 from the center line there on Crawford?
I, at 110-foot depth, you've got about 60 feet of that used up by setbacks, because you've got double frontage there, and so it doesn't leave you much in the middle, the other, the other aspect of that, one of the reasons that, you know, the Rods shell and all that development works, but you'll also notice that there's no front yard landscaping there, nor is there room for any, because at 110-foot depth, the first thing to go is landscaping, because there's no room for it, and so if you were, if you were looking at redevelopment according to our current standards, 110-foot can work, but you'd be granting a lot of variances or waivers to make it work, because it's just so tight.
We'd end up with a bowling, bowling alley shaped building in it by virtue of the setbacks off both sides.
I guess I'm still not clear what difference it makes whether Birch goes through or doesn't go through for a development on, on the east.
Well, the more, the more critical part is, is the vacation in Cypress to the south to get the depth.
But, but talk about Birch itself, what is, what is the impact of a development if Birch does not go through?
I'm sorry, well, I was tying the two together.
Okay.
I mean, frankly, it gives her more, it gives her more usable square footage.
If it does not go through?
But then you're dead-ending Cypress, then you would be dead-ending Birch there.
The, I'll take credit or blame for whichever way you want to look at it, but from the staff perspective, the idea was, we have, whether it's Wendy's at Alberton, Ohio, or all these different locations, the, the idea is to get the driveways off of Crawford, and if you have a side street available, then the east lot can develop with access from Birch instead of access from Crawford, so it was that.
That's my figure, safety issue.
It was a safety issue, and then it was enhancing access and visibility of the park from Crawford, and as I noted before, maybe I'm the only one that's ever heard it, but we previously through the Chamber of Commerce and others, we've gotten feedback from people who stayed in motels on Crawford who had no idea that there was a park there, because there's no way to really see it or get to it.
I agree with that, I just didn't know what the impact on development would be, so.
Yeah, I think moreover, you'd be dead-ending Birch, and that obviously wouldn't work, so.
Was this property zoned C5 when Mrs. Kaufman purchased the property, do you know that?
Mrs. Kaufman rezoned the property to C5 in 1974, that's how long she's owned it. That's a lot of years.
Any further questions of Mr. Mays?
Any further questions of Mr. Mace? Thank you all for your time.
One more other question. Is it, how important is it to your development on the west to have access off of Crawford?
Well, frankly, it's an item that is in flux between the restaurant people and Dean, I think, right now, as far as what works the best. That has me here representing the restaurant folks, and I'm not sure that I can tell you that.
There has been some discussion with them about possibly having one driveway, but from the standpoint of improving pedestrian and traffic safety, obviously, trading all the driveways on Crawford for access on Birch and building sidewalks and all of that makes it a safer situation. Taking the big open cut for rods and consolidating into one center driveway would still be an improvement, but it wouldn't be as much of improvement as moving all the access to Birch and Willow.
Conversation that Dean and I had to that end was that we could leave it conceptual and allow Dean and, to work with them and make that determination.
You're not approving a site plan today, but you certainly, it's within your purview to make a recommendation as to how access to Crawford should be limited. And a lot of that's driven by the, if you don't put Birch through, then you certainly don't want to limit access to Crawford, because that becomes the access.
Any further questions of Mr. Mace?
Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address the commission? State your name and address, please.
My name is Ryan Bradshaw. I live at 711 West Ash. I'm the manager of Real Stuff Liquor, which is on the west side of the building right there. A few things were pointed out that I kind of had concern with. Mr. Andrews was discussing the visibility of the park, and he believes that an increased visibility due to Birch going through, that's a vacant lot. So, you have as much visibility now as you would ever have with the street. So Birch is not necessary to go through there. In regards to a lease, the lease that my father had is a lease that's been re-upped for about 20 years now, over and over and over again. It's just, it's an unspoken, this is gonna happen. Me personally, this is a business that I'm passionate about. I came back from school passionate about getting fired up to do the day-to-day things that my father does. To see this swindled like this is garbage. And this is something that was done behind our back. We weren't informed until the neighbors were informed. In fact, Mr., the Hickory Hut guy is the one that came to me and said something about this, and I said, there's no way. We would've been told about it. Roberta wouldn't have been upfront with us about that. Now, you want to talk about a resident of Salina? This lady lives in a retirement community next to Houston, okay? Who are you supporting? I mean, you're shopping out a lease to someplace in Houston. Her daughter, her son don't live in this town at all. You're gonna put an Arby's there, a company, national company? What return are you gonna see on that? You're losing jobs, and not just that. I mean, you're not losing 11 jobs. I have seven employees at the liquor store. There's four employees at the gas station, plus our bookkeeper, so that's actually 12. You're losing 12 jobs. You're losing an income that also helps provide another 20 jobs on top of that at the other rod stores. You cannot possibly tell me that this is positive for the city, positive for the whole county, the whole community. I mean, you got your welcome sign. I think that's fantastic. I mean, a lot of people have naysaid some of the things, like the arts on the bridge and things like that. I think that's fantastic. I think that makes it a more presentable community, and I appreciate that. But you've also got a whole drainage ditch and a whole, I mean, there's a million other places you guys can improve the property. And what are you gonna do? You gonna replace a gas station with a fast-food restaurant? Did you improve it? What did you do? And this open idea of further improvement to the west, or to the east there, if there was anything that could come to fruition, it would have been mentioned. And let's be honest about it. If there was anything that could help this thing go through, it would have been done. And, I mean, as far as the rest of it's concerned, I agree with these people. You know, I work there every single day, except on Sundays, obviously, we're closed. But I'm there six days a week, and I see the kids that come across the street and come check these things out. And I agree, that's something I hadn't even thought about prior to today. I was all caught up in what's going on business-wise. But that is, I mean, that's a tragic situation. And within, the week we talked with Dean Andrews, that week and the week prior, there were three accidents in front of the store. There was a rear-end collision on the north lane on the eastbound side. There was a car that hit a deer just right straight to the east of our sign. And then there was a Calabrese van hit a kid on a skateboard crossing the street right there. So, I mean, as it is, it's dangerous. And I believe that if you put, I mean, if you shut off Cypress and allow these people to jog down the street like we all do, that's how I go home. I park right where that truck's at. In fact, I guarantee that's my truck right there. I come back, I go around, and I get up, turn right. That's how I go home. And that's because I can't get on Willow and take a right-hand turn. It's just not possible with the light traffic. You can't do it. And so, I mean, to alter that makes absolutely no sense. From a financial standpoint, makes absolutely no sense. From a job standpoint, makes absolutely no sense. What you're benefiting is somebody who lives in Houston, Texas, and a company that's national. And that's essentially what you're doing. You're shutting down something local and providing something that you're never gonna see return on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission?
I'm Linda Hyman, and I'm manager of the Shell. And I've been manager three years there, and they've all become like a family to me. These people come in, they talk to you about their problems, you listen. You gonna have an Arby's sit there and have time to do that? I don't think so. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question for Mr. Stack. Is there any, from an engineering standpoint, is there any kind of factual data that would lead us to believe that the traffic speed down Birch would be increased if that was allowed to go through on Crawford there?
Yeah, we don't, I mean, it's, we don't see, I mean, we could, we'd have to study Willow and kind of see if that's a problem there, I guess, because then it would be open to Crawford, just like Willow. So I don't, we don't have any way to know that now, I guess, at this point, but we could look into Willow being a possible example of that, if that's necessary.
The sidewalks, there are no sidewalks on Birch or Willow, is that correct?
I don't believe, Dean, is there?
I don't think there are.
I don't believe there are, no.
No, it doesn't look like it, no.
If we're talking about sidewalks, then if Birch goes through, and sidewalks would be on both sides of Birch, on the new section?
Yes.
What is the city's sidewalk plan? Is there some way to put sidewalks down Birch then to help with?
Yeah, that's a possibility. Since that's a park, it would be more possible. It's harder to get sidewalks on, even though it's public property, it's harder to get sidewalks where there aren't any. And Ken Kennedy can attest to that, trying to put them around schools. But since it's on the park, it would be very easy to connect the park with Birch and then with Crawford, which we feel is a good thing for this whole area, actually. But yeah, putting it closer to, along the park, along Birch, that would be a possibility.
Yes. Since we're the abutting owner, it would be easier on the east side than the west side.
Yeah.
I sympathize with the neighborhood. I spent a lot of time in this area with my grandkids when they were learning to ride bikes, and several summers we were there. It's a quiet neighborhood. It's a level neighborhood, which is very helpful with little ones on bikes. And really have spent a lot of time in that area. My grandkids had things at the Friendship Center, pottery classes and that kind of thing, and so we would take our bikes over there and ride. And it is a nice Salina neighborhood, and I understand that change always comes really hard to a neighborhood. I'm not convinced that traffic would appreciably increase on Birch if it went through. And I'm not convinced that a development or redevelopment of that area is going to negatively impact the neighborhood, because I think it's going to look nice, and I think it's going to be a positive thing for the entranceway there. But I understand anticipating something new and different is hard in a neighborhood.
It seems...
Are we allowed to speak again? Are we allowed to speak? Guys want to clarify something right now?
Some of your comments have been, and I'm not trying to keep you from speaking, but some of your comments have been to civil nature. You know, we're dealing with land utilization and stuff, so if this involves something between you and the Kaufmans, that's something that probably should best be...
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay. Come to the podium, please.
Now, just real quick, just on the park, whole park idea, I think anytime we build a park now, we create as much of a buffer zone. Look at Jerry Ivy. Anywhere we build a park, we don't let roads go by. And that's really my only comment. And just because we can find a way to make this nooks and crannies doesn't really necessarily mean it's still what's best for Salina. Thanks.
Do you want a question?
I just, I have a question of Dean, if I may.
Go ahead.
Before we're done with... I want to clarify, I'm sure I'm right, but first of all, the Hickory Hut can veto the closing of Cypress to the south of their business, is that right?
Abutting their property. You cannot vacate a street over the objections of somebody who abuts that portion of the street.
Which means that Cypress, if we were to endorse this plan again, it would mean that Cypress is gonna dead-end partway into that block in front of the park. Is that right? It'll dead-end at the property line?
That would be one option would be...
Right there.
You just basically start here, and you have basically a dead-end, and it only serves as a street both from the park and it could get out through here. Basically, you got a dead-end sign here, and it could be eliminated here and through here. That's one option. The other option is to say, leave this entire stretch alone just as it is, and just close and vacate this part. That's another option.
And that's the option I'm trying to explore in my mind, at least, is to do what you just said. Leave that part open all the way to the, actually, to the east of Birch, and then not extend Birch to Crawford. I'm trying to picture how that would function for the neighborhood, as well as it would certainly prevent the traffic that they're wanting to prevent down Birch. It wouldn't change that any. It just wouldn't allow those who live on Willow to make a right turn onto the current Cypress and have another possibility of getting onto Crawford.
You know, I have to comment. Since this thing came back to the commission, I've driven over there many times, and I've been there when, unfortunately, when I have to go there is when people are getting off of work, and I've been there in heavy traffic times, and I never had to wait more than two or three cars out there. I don't understand the backing up that they were talking about, but I suppose it can exist, but certainly, I never encountered that.
The other thing that I'm concerned about, what we have talked about a lot and have supported is infill development. And to leave that, I think it, without vacating Cypress to the Hickory Hut line there, limits the development of that property. And I think, I don't know, it does make sense to me, I think, to put Birch through and to vacate Cypress then at the Hickory Hut.
And the only thing that you would have to think about under Mr. Kennedy's scenario, which would be just to vacate Cypress between Birch and Willow and not put Birch through, is then, then you'd have to think about how you would access the west lot, because if you don't have Birch, that means Crawford is your sole or primary means of access.
Which we wouldn't allow if we, if that were virgin property and we were developing it for the first time.
Certainly discourage it if we were starting new from a platting standpoint.
Right.
But it is a legitimate option, and it's certainly an option that's on the table, is to just focus on the piece west of Birch and not involve the piece to the east. And there's nothing that requires Birch to go through. It was a suggestion primarily to do two things, improve visibility and access to the park, and also provide an alternate access for those future lots that didn't involve Crawford driveways. That was the primary motivation for that. And I said, I'll take credit or blame for that. That was not the petitioner's idea. That was mine.
Well, I'd have to agree with the fact, this stands with many other decisions that we've made, is to limit access off arterial streets into specific businesses, and by opening Birch up, we've done that. We've created a safer pathway off of Crawford, and I am in favor of that.
Is there a way, and I don't know who to ask that to, it sounds like the big concern down Birch Street is the speed of the traffic. And I'm assuming that's a 20 or a 30?
30, should be.
30. It's 30.
And because that's a park area with a lot of traffic, is there something we can do to slow that traffic down?
Not without physical barriers of bumps or tables of some sort.
Is that possible?
It's possible.
Hmm. I don't see that being very viable. Those are your neighbors speeding. Those are your people.
I agree.
That's your 22 people who signed your petition speeding down those streets. If you have a speed problem, you need to call the police. If it's, if they're reckless and they're driving like that, that's not new people coming up the street. Those are your neighbors. I mean, that's just the way it is. Looking at this plan, the only smart plan is to allow Birch Street to go through, to block Cypress, to block Cypress over there for development. We're sitting here hemming and hawing about something, trying to be nice to the neighbors. I appreciate your concern, but this is growth. The city's gonna grow. It's what's best for the city. It's probably what's gonna be best for your neighborhood in the long run, whether you believe it or not. It is gonna be a better thing for you. Rod's is an old gas station. Businesses die. The new things come and go. It's just the ebb and flow of economics, and it's just what happens. Birch Street is gonna allow people who live on Birch to exit that way. They already say they don't use Willow anyway, so why would they need access going the other way? If you're eliminating the people off Birch Street who go over to Willow Street and you're already not waiting, as you said before, you're gonna have a lot less traffic going off of whatever street that is, Willow. Anyway, so you're gonna have less traffic flow going out here. We're just hemming and hawing about what a good development we've already come up with before. Unless somebody's directly against us, I say we vote on this thing and move forward. We're here like two, hour and a half already on this thing. I mean, well, I mean, you gotta be decisive.
No, we can't.
Yeah, we can't get in a discussion with you. I mean, this is development.
And who has a lease and who doesn't have a lease doesn't have anything to do with the...
Yeah. Your lease was the year-to-year. Lease protect both sides. I mean, that's not the issue here. What we're talking about is the development of the city. This is what's best for the city. We heard the public. I understand your concern. I disagree with you, and I'm ready to vote.
Or you could make a motion.
I'd like, I'd like to just give my two cents worth. We seem to be faced a lot of times with these where there's an existing condition, the people, in this case, it sounds like Mrs. Kaufman purchased this property, Cypress was there, she knew what the situation was, and then we want to change. Okay, things change and grow, and I'm for development, too. In a perfect world, I would not like traffic coming off of Crawford. I can see the buffers, I've seen it work, I understand that, but it just seems like we're changing the existing in favor of new business, so to speak, all the time. I guess my two cents worth is I'm more along the lines of Mr. Kennedy, the rods piece and the section of Cypress between Birch and Willow, making that a single lot, but I'd like to see the other part of Cypress to the east remain open so that Birch would go, would not go through. That's my two cents worth.
My concern with that would be, then, where are we gonna route the traffic of, they say this is an Arby's, I have no information that that's it. I'm just saying, this restaurant, we're gonna have to reroute them back out Willow or out the front to Crawford, and I'd like to see that moved further to Birch, so I could definitely see the advantage of having at least an exit where Birch Street is. And I'm thinking, if you're already doing that anyway, just let it flow through. If these people are speeding, it's their... If these people are speeding, it's their neighbors, it's them, they need to slow that traffic down. There's not a, teach your kids not to play in the street, teach them to look both ways. What happened to responsibility of people? You know? If it's your neighbor speeding, call the police, slow them down, don't get your kids in the street. I mean, this is the way things are supposed to flow when people play by the rules, you know? I mean, we hear this every time we get a new development, kids in the street, kids in the street, you know? Keep them out of the street.
Where Birch is going, the proposed to go through, can that be vacated completely and then purchased or can that become just one lot? Can the city, explain that to me.
You're saying if Birch does not get extended through?
Right.
I guess you would just, John, if you could go to slide five? I mean, this is what it looks like today. It is multiple platted lots, but you could have somebody come in and buy the whole thing. And I think what Jeff is trying to point out and I guess our perspective would be is that that's what you would get, is that long rectangular pattern there and probably lots of paving and parking problems because you don't have enough room. But because of the setbacks here and I guess the other thing, we were looking at it from the standpoint of Cypress is that with Cypress there, you've got two front yards to deal with. Now, you or the Board of Zoning Appeals can always deal with things like that through variances, but if you left, if you denied all this and left it just as it is, then you've got a piece that runs right over to Hickory Hut that's all under one ownership and is all commercially zoned and could be, it could be developed today. I just, we were, the planning staff was of the opinion that one of the reasons that it has never developed is that the lots, that's why you have a house foundation there. The lots in the 50s were platted for houses, there were houses put there. In the 70s, it was rezoned for commercial, but since it was never replatted or repackaged to make it conducive to commercial, you never really got anything. And you probably won't as long as it's 110 feet deep.
Dean, if this, if we would, and just so we'll know, if we were to change the recommendation and say not go ahead and extend Birch through to Crawford, does that mean then that we'd have to have another public hearing on that kind of new design?
No. You're having a public hearing now, you can decide the request, the Birch Drive is just part of the proposal or the plan, but the request is to close and vacate some or all of Cypress and you get to be the judge of if any or what parts of Cypress get vacated. And if you don't think, our thought was that if you did that, that you should replace it with Birch as a means of access. But that is not, they're not petitioning to build that, that was just part of the plan to improve the circulation if Cypress was eliminated.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Is there any further discussion on this matter? Any questions of staff?
Well, my only comment again is, I think, I understand what Ken's trying to do and understand your support of that. You're trying to come to a compromise with people, but really, and you can vote how you want, obviously, but I think it's a compromise in the form of a bad decision. I think we're going to be coming back here looking to extend Birch again because I think routing Birch traffic over through Cypress, we're still going to end up with a pretty much an unbuildable lot. Nobody's going to come in here and build a building sideways if we don't put Birch in there. We're just going to be still looking at more empty lots there and we're really not developing the entrance to Salina. I mean, the whole comprehensive plan, everything we've been looking at is trying to improve these things. If we're not going to try and improve our city and make these things better, which will increase their value over there. It is going to make your area nicer. I would completely disagree with you. I've done real estate for eight or nine years. I can tell you it's going to help your area, whether you believe it or not. But I think we're going to be back here extending Birch again and I think to only vote on this to make a compromise is short-sighted. I really think we should go ahead and extend Birch because I think it's going to help the traffic flow of this new restaurant. And I think by blocking that part of Cypress, we're going ahead and giving Jeff a go-ahead. Maybe he doesn't have anybody on deck yet, but he will. He will. It's an entrance to Salina, somebody is going to come along and buy that land and it's going to be an improvement to the entrance to Salina. And I would just encourage you to think about that Birch Street and the need for it before we sort of short-sightedly just vote to cut one part of Cypress for a compromise that I really don't think is in the best interest of the city, really, or the neighbors themselves, whether they know it yet or not, so.
I didn't entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we vacate Cypress Drive to the west boundary of Hickory Hut and that we put Birch Avenue, Birch Road, Birch through to Crawford. That we make this contingent on the five conditions of approval of the staff, which I think, I don't know if it includes that, but I would like to see the developer agree to a pedestrian easement on the south side and would like for the city to consider extending the sidewalk along Birch through the park. And not that this has anything to do with anything, but I do not want to see a concrete tall thing there that...
A barrier.
A barrier. That somehow we can make that be more aesthetically pleasing.
Just need to be clear, are you talking about extending Cypress just to Birch or are you going ahead and talking to the Hickory Hut line?
No, vacating to the Hickory Hut line, yes.
I would second that motion.
Been moved and seconded. Does everyone understand the motion?
Okay. Been moved... But the last part about the concrete...
Well, I know that's not a part of my motion.
Is that part of the screening or what?
No, I'm, there's got to be some way than...
Oh, okay. What you would do as far as making Cypress dead-end?
Yes.
And how to make that look?
Yes.
Sounds like a good project for Mr. Stack.
Absolutely. Mr. Stack.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to extend Birch Street and vacate Cypress Street to the Hickory Hut property line.
And the way we're interpreting that is that you have on page six there, there are five recommended conditions and then a sixth condition would be added that would require that a pedestrian easement be provided in that buffer strip at the south end.
Correct.
Between Willow and Birch.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Alyssa, would you, yeah, thank you. The noes, would you, thank you. Do you have those, Alyssa? Okay. Motion carries. All right. If you'll bear with me for just a second, I'm going to get back to my agenda on my computer, saving paper and trees. Item number three, comprehensive plan topics. Thank you all for coming and your comments. Thank you very much.
I think primarily what we'd like, the comprehensive plan itself and the notebook and all is a pretty beefy document. And I think what we would like to do is kind of discussed earlier and we boiled it down to what we think are the most significant areas as far as, that impact the city commission as far as implementation. But assuming that a new plan gets adopted, then there's a number of things that have to be done to implement that or carry it out. And what you have on page three dash nine, 10, 11 through 19 there or through 20 is I would say that your homework and what we would really like you to do is on those areas, you will see in the far right-hand column, those are the bodies or public entities that might be involved in implementing those various things. And as I look at page 3.9 and look at the right-hand column, I see Planning Commission, Planning Commission, Planning Commission, Planning Commission, Planning Commission, and Planning Commission. And so that means that you as well as staff would be involved in implementing those things. But what the columns, the four columns that precede that, that have marks in them are attempts to kind of prioritize which of those should be done sooner and which should be done later. And what we'd really appreciate you doing is looking at those and helping to prioritize those, the ones that you think are really important and the ones that you think are ones that should be done first, to see if you agree with those. So I don't know if you can call that up or not, John?
The legend is, the zero means what?
The zero means it's on, something that's ongoing, it's not something that's new.
I knew there was a legend someplace.
Yeah, at the very beginning.
But for example, on page three dash nine there, the, under land use, it says, create a conservation zoning district that prohibits development within conservation areas. I think what we really discussed was create a conservation zoning district that discourages development, because I think what we discussed was prohibiting it generally, but having some exceptions there. There's discussion there about adopting an urban service area. There is discussion about the encourage mixing in proximity of different land uses that encourage different modes of transportation.
Dean, I'm not trying to interrupt you. Did you want us to give you input on this right now or do you want us to fill this out?
No, what I'd like to do is, and the reason this is mailed out, but it's mailed out in a, is a smaller form, is that we would pick this up at your next meeting, but have you read through those and there's a number of those that are indicated as ongoing, which that means we ought to be doing it right now. But if you read through those and you could give some feedback to say, well, we really think these are the priorities or these are the things that should be focused on or we'd like to focus on as a commission, these were kind of put in there by the consultant and tweaked a little bit by staff, but you're the one that's recommending adoption of the plan, so you ought to have the opportunity to look at those and say, well, gee, we think these are more important than these and boy, it's not really realistic. Why are all these in the first year column and there's no way we could possibly do that? So to get a little more realistic view of that, so if you take this paper example, this one, create a conservation, I mean, we don't have a conservation zoning district today, so one would have to be created and adopted and extended out into that area that was mapped. That's going to involve the planning commission, it's going to involve, we've already involved the development community because they've been here and spoken on it several times. So that, maybe it's real important, maybe it's kind of important and it's not. So what this is saying is that if the plan is adopted, the things in this column are the things that are important, we'll work on first and things over here as time allows or gradually. If you read through those and you think that those priorities are misplaced or whatever, we would, you're the one that's recommending adoption of the plan and we would like to see, we would like to see that looked at so it's not a rubber stamping, so to speak, and so, and even singling out a couple of those to say, you know, these are the things that we really think are important. This is an opportunity to do that because for the most part, what we do as a staff is put out fires. I mean, we don't, we don't know what's, I couldn't tell you who's going to walk in the door next month and come in with a plan to vacate a street. I just don't generally know that and as a commission, you can't plan for that and we can't, these are things that can be planned for, scheduled in, prioritized, you know? And if you think this conservation district, it's a nice concept, but it's not a front burner issue that should be jumped on right now, those are the kind of things that we need to get input on. So I guess what we'd like you to do is to take this matrix that we've kind of boiled down to those two sections and like I said, it's ominous for us because we're the staff, but if you look at that right-hand column and look at all those things and say, Planning Commission, Planning Commission, Planning Commission, I mean, you can't do all of them at once, nor would you want to. So if you look through those and say, have a question, say, why would we want to do this? We'd like to know that. And if you look in there and say, well, we think this is really important or I think this is important, we'd like to hear that.
Do you want us to give them a number value or...
Well, they are set up in a number. The matrix is set up where column one means that you do it in the first year after implementation and the other ones are just kind of scheduled, top priority, second priority, third priority, fourth priority. So these columns here are, one that's over here is the first priority, it's over here, second, third, and maybe we'll do it, maybe we'll never get into it, kind of thing. If this isn't something that's a top priority, it would probably be...
Got an arithmetic graph you're going to like.
If we have a plan, every single thing is over here, they'll probably all resign. Staff will collapse from exhaustion because you just, you can't do it. So it's not realistic to load everything up there, in there, but there, we've kind of looked at it, but it's been a while and a question of how realistic it is, but it's, as far as different plans I've looked at, and this plan has the biggest implementation section I've ever seen in any plan ever and maybe it's too ambitious. And so we're not suggesting taking those and nudging them all off to fourth priority, but on the other hand, it helps everybody if there's some discussion and agreement about what first priorities could be because the test of any plan is what exercise that you just went through. Because if you adopt a plan and you say, we want to change our corridors coming into town and every time that there's an opportunity to do that, say, well, this is not what we had in mind, then maybe that really wasn't a priority. I'm not saying what the right answer or wrong answer is in a case like Cypress because it's a, obviously we had a number of people here who are interested and it's not an easy situation, but that's part of the reason that you do plans is to say, what's important? What do we want to see? What do we want to emphasize so that when you do get a case like this in front of you, you can say, you know, this is a priority and we've all agreed as a commission that this is a priority. Well, that's why you should look those over carefully and make sure that when the day comes that a plan's adopted and you got 28 things that are top priority and four that are put off to the side, that's probably not very realistic. So you probably want to look at those and say, you know, well, as a resident or citizen of Salina area, this is the items that are important to me. That's really what we'd like you to do for your homework is just look at that and say, why, why is this in here? Why would we want to do that? It needs some skepticism, it needs a different... It needs a different set of eyes.
If you all check your contracts, there is a homework section in there and you are required.
Well, I can-
Two hours a night.
I mean, I, yeah, I do my homework, but I can already tell that what I'll probably do is prioritize these main headings. And all of those things underneath-
Right, would just follow suit.
-are what implements that.
Right.
But I think-
I would focus on the main things because the other ones are subsets of that.
Right, right. So there are probably, I don't know, 20 of those.
Yeah, it's not nearly as daunting if you just focus on-
Right.
The big stuff.
Yeah.
If you focus on the things in both here, say, preserving the edge of the community so we can grow is important to me, and we need to take steps right off the bat. This is a tool to do that, but that's what you would want.
Okay. I, that's a little-
I like that. And that's a lot less daunting than going through every one of them. But I, I think, I don't know how many times Alyssa got roped into this too, where this was repackaged, reformatted, redistributed a number of times. I think Alyssa actually ended up reproducing this entire section because it wasn't very well organized.
Well, Alyssa, how hard would it be for you just to give us these, these main toppings in a, just in a row without all the sub toppings underneath?
I can't because the consultant made this and it's locked. It doesn't let you.
Okay.
I mean, I can copy and paste the text.
Okay, never mind.
But it wouldn't be as-
Never mind.
I wish I could, but they locked me out of it now.
Okay. Well, we're paying them, aren't we?
Yeah, be your plan, yeah. That's not a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just say it wasn't user friendly as far as making edits.
Yeah.
And so we're still in that mode, but that part hasn't been easy. But we will have, on the 19th, we will meet and we have, we had an application that we accepted. Well, it's actually, I think, the fourth time we accepted it. And then we actually processed it this time. There's a piece of property that's out, it's southwest corner of Magnolia and I-135. And it was way back when, it was the Streckfuss Farmstead.
Oh, man.
Way back when, it contained so many acres. And it was purchased from Mr. Streckfuss by Darrell Hills, and he doesn't believe that what he purchased includes all of the former Streckfuss property, nor does Mr. Streckfuss. So they had a meeting with the abutting owners, the Marietta family, and thought that they had an agreement as far as what was Marietta's and what was Streckfuss's. And based on that, a plat was prepared and applications were filed. And we accepted that based on a settlement that they had reached. Well, now the settlement is off. So the, we've got it advertised and we've got it under review, and so there'll be an advertised public hearing for that. But if it's still in flux as far as who owns what, then we'll discuss it, give you the issues, and then recommend not taking any action until the ownership is resolved. But it's really interesting that if you look at all the old aerial photos and fence lines, they match up perfectly with the larger area. But the description that was done and the deed was less than that. And so if Streckfuss always owned it and he just didn't happen to include that in the deed, it means he still owns it and he can deed it over. But the Marietta family has claimed it, so they're still having that discussion. And we didn't, we didn't accept it or process it until we thought that was settled, so.
One of them has free legal help, yeah.
That's on your agenda. And then we're, discussion of small wind, wind energy regulations for small turbines and some education on that. And then the concept of, we've got the university district, we have the hospital district, and when we talk about the educational facilities district for our elementary and secondary schools. So that'll be on your agenda for the 19th.
Speaking of the wind energy thing, I happen to be on the energystar.gov website, and there is, I don't know if anybody's aware of this, if you build a residential wind turbine at your home, there is a no ceiling cap that you will get a 30% tax break off of your taxes. With no ceiling. I mean, a lot of the home improvement stuff has a $1,500 cap on it. This is a no ceiling deal to it. So I don't know if that's going to prompt people to turn in more applications.
There have also been some changes in the metering laws that make it a little more friendly that require the utility companies to buy back surplus energy. They have made some changes there.
Awesome.
That wasn't in place last time we discussed it, but that has changed since then, and which means that if I have a wind generator at my home and I produce more than I use, then the meter has to go the other way and Westar, whoever has to buy it.
Good.
So it's, that side of it's complicated.
Well, probably, do you know, have you heard the rates yet? I mean, it used to be 1/10 of 1, I mean, it was ridiculous. And whereas everybody else was paying rate, wholesale rate. So hopefully, they force Westar.
But prior to that, they didn't have any obligation to take any surplus at all.
Yeah. The only other thing I'd like to comment on before we adjourn is that I got along fine with my, with my paperless agenda.
And there's two, there's two ways to do that. I mean, the one way to do it is we simply email the packet to everybody and don't send out a paper copy. And that saves all the copy and paper here. And now it may add expense to you because you may print it out wherever you're at or-
We can print out just the pages we wanted to print out.
Right. Or take the approach that Patrick does, and you may or may not all be, you know, in that same boat. And as I said, my mother's been a planning commissioner for 12 years. She has no computer. She has no email. And so she gets her paperless packet by going over to the senior center and logging on over there and then printing off her packet over there, which I'm not sure they appreciate that. But that's, that's the access that she has. So it's, there's two aspects to paperless. One is, boy, it's easy for us. We don't have to run any copies. We don't have postage. We're not using up all that paper here. But where it becomes paperless is on your end, whether, you know, I don't know that the city's going to go out and buy you all laptops so you can do that. But if we don't run the copies and send out hard copy, we certainly save on paper, we save on postage. It's more reliable because post office hasn't always been good to us on delivery. And so certainly, we can do that and we can implement that pretty easily. But the only concern we'd have is that if you want to print it out and read stuff, then it's your paper, not ours. So we're happy to do it any way that is convenient.
I think an alternative to email, just having it posted on the city website and allow us to-
There is.
Yeah. And having us access it that way at home, that way we can prepare for the meetings. And then when we get here, I think, you know, I'd be all in favor of a set of laptops that were shared amongst the city commission, the planning-
Cheaper in the end.
Yeah, all the other boards. And you pass them out with that information preloaded on there. We sit here and go through them.
As long as you don't send each other emails during the meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Dean, would an option be kind of a half step? Those that possibly want paper copies could go ahead and receive those. And those that did want to go paperless could opt out of the paper. It saves them postage.
Sure.
And some would prefer to have paper. Like myself, it's faster for me because I can just open up the packet on Friday and start reading it right there. I don't have to go log on and run copies and stuff.
Yeah, we have occasionally, not some, it's been more with applicants than with you all, but we've had some cases where we'd mail something out on Thursday and somebody would get it on the Wednesday after the Tuesday planning commission meeting, which is completely unacceptable when it's local mail. So there's email or getting it off the website. But our job is to make it convenient for you. So we can, you can email us or call us and say, we want to opt out. We'll get it off the website. We'll email it.
Can we just tell Alyssa now? I mean, you can take me off the paper. I can get everything off email and have a laptop, so.
I'd be off also.
You want paperless?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same here.
If you want paperless, raise your hand.
He wants paper.
It's a split.
We don't mean a Salina journal.
Dave wants paperless.
I want paper.
Oh.
Okay, I got you.
I'd like to have the paper at the meeting, but I don't need to have it mailed to me. I can review it. But when I'm here at a meeting time, it's much easier for me to-
Yeah, if there's a copy manual right here. I would go paperless.
There's one thing that we can, that we used to do, and it wouldn't be that hard because we do the same, we simply take the ones that we would make for you. You've got your notebooks there. We used to do that before. And people, well, if they're too lazy to bring their packet, because what would happen is that we'd mail it, commissioners would forget to bring it to the meeting, and we have the notebooks up there. So we'd three-hole punch the packet and put it in your notebooks there.
We're more responsible than that.
We can do that. I mean, if you're paperless, say, Carl says, I'll read it off the screen in the computer and get up, and then as long as I have something at the meeting, we'll simply take the copies that we would have made, put them in those notebooks, and have them at your place at the meeting. We can certainly do that.
If we can do that, I'm for paperless.
That just saves mailing, basically, yeah.
Because I don't like dealing with, I don't want you to have to pay for your packet like that one time and what postage due.
I had that happen one time too. Well, I haven't had that happen yet.
I'm sure we'd have heard about it if we did.
$1.56.
Is that right?
Mine was like 90 cents or something.
I had one too.
And it's not my fault. It's the mailroom who weighs it. I don't know what's paperless.
Had her finger on the scale.
If I could just pick up a copy when I get here.
Yeah, we'd be happy to do it that way. We have your notebooks there, and we would just put the packet in your notebooks so you can open it up and have it at the meeting.
So who still wants a mail to them? Anyone?
I'd like to have mine mailed.
And I, at this point-
You still want a mail?
Yeah, I'm going to work towards the other.
Merle's going to go paperless, huh?
But I can hit there.
I appreciate that.
We are adjourned, so.
It would probably be helpful if you had an agenda to your-
You know, I-